All right. Good evening. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the City of Tucson Planning Commission. My name is Chris Ortiz Pino, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. The responsibilities of this body are to advise Mayor and Council and the Planning and Development Services Department on the adoption of long-range plans, policies, specific plans, and regulations that affect land use and development. Full staff, please call the role.
Yes, Commissioner Cassidy.
Here.
Chair Wellatt. Commissioner Zager.
Here.
Is that Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Pafford.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Vice Chair Ortiz Pino.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Wurrockay. Commissioner McCantsy.
Present.
Commissioner Kenny.
Present.
And Commissioner Lambo. Thank you.
All right. Call for the next item, number two, approval of the legal action report from March 6, 2024. I'd entertain a motion to approve the legal action report. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second. I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? Motion proves. Okay, call for the next item, Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan Amendment, Public Hearing. Would staff please provide their presentation?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Beal with the Planning and Development Services. And tonight we have the concurrent plan amendment. And it's a public hearing for the amendment to the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan. So Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan is located over on the east side of Tucson, Tancaverde, Wrightstown, and the Houghton Road, roughly that area. And then the plan amendment location are two parcels that are located on Tancaverde Road just west of Bear Canyon. Want to also mention that there had been some previous C2 rezoning cases or community commercial land uses that have been rezoned and actually amendments out in the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan area. One of them was C98811, which was a tire repair shop. The other one is the C99225, which was a shopping center that the amendment was allow some outdoor storage or for display for the nursery and those kind of things. And then the most recent one was C91902, which was for a brake master's auto repair shop. And each had a little bit of a version regarding the community commercial land use techniques. So the proposed amendment site, as you can see outlined there in yellow, are two vacant parcels. They're adjacent to the shopping center and then self-storage. See a little better here of the uses. C1 zoning in that area and it's next to the gas station retail to the east. The self-storage wraps around from the north and around the driveway to the immediate west of the property. And then across the street is a some commercial center of food service and personal services. The Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan has some implementation techniques and some design elements for community commercial. So it anticipated that besides the neighborhood commercial land uses out in the area, there might be a need for some community commercial uses, but it actually provided some design and implementation techniques to make sure that they would follow to fit into the neighborhood. So it said to consider is actually an implementation technique under a number 11. And it says to consider select community commercial uses. Pulled out a few of them that would make sense of one being compatible and meeting the retail and service needs of the area. And then it needs to be located, shopping center and oriented away. And then the building, they need to meet the right of way for the scenic route of a minimum 100 feet setback. And the building needs to be located a minimum of 350 feet from any suburban or low-density residential. I mentioned that the one rezoning, I mean, case that but it also calls for uses not involving outdoor storage or display of merchandise or goods except plant nurseries and home improvement, retail, rental, or equipment. So that was for that commercial center. But then the the implementation technique 11G is the one that was really, that the amendment is centered on. And that calls out that the building needs to be complete or the use completely contained within an enclosed and roof structure, except as noted in 11E. So the requested amendment is to modify the 11G and where it says completely contained within an enclosed and roof structure, except as noted in 11E above. Or with the exception to set to the parcels to section G for parcels 114-51-200B and 114-51-200C are exempt from the implementation technique 11G and are subject to the following, where all the uses associated with an express car wash are to be screened from adjacent properties and streets by landscaping and decorative fencing or masonry wall. So that the proposed amendment is only for the specific site and for the specific use. Otherwise, the 11G applies to anywhere else in the plan. So the applicant updated their preliminary development plan, revised it. They actually, you know, to more reflect what they're planning than do in their, in the report. And that was taken a little bit from some comments from that the commission had at the study session. And so the 30-foot natural landscape buffer area, the border, well, there are no basins, this is going to be natural space. It also shows actually more fully the landscaping and the screening with the trees along that natural landscape border. And then also shows a little bit more of landscaping around. They also updated the renderings because the previous renderings really were more from showing more of the building, which is what they were meant to do. This one with the conceptual rendering was actually here, actually filling in the landscape, how that will be and how it should look for that. You can see the landscaping up in the right-hand corner where the trees are, where the cars pulling out and along Tancaverde. Also probably up in the right-hand corner gives another view of how the building is set back from Tancaverde, how the screening would work along, along the, where the vacuums are, and then how it sort of tucked in around next to the self-storage facility and the community center to the, to the east. There was a, as we mentioned in the study session, there was a neighborhood meeting that was held on November 30. That requirement, that was a, that meeting again was for, since it's a concurrent plan amendment, it was also for the rezoning and for the plan amendment. And then staff was, as part of the UDC co were, were in attendance. So in summary, the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan currently prohibits the outdoor uses at the project location. The plan amendment allows the amended use again only at this site. And the policy remains in place for other areas of the neighborhood plan. The requested amendment will allow the applicant's proposal using the typical Mr. Carwash's design and where the wash tunnel will be set in the back of the parcel and then the vacuum is more to the front. And then the proposal meets the setback requirements for the Tancaverde Road incorporates a landscape buffer featuring rainwater harvesting features. And then it activates a vacant space and integrates into the other commercial areas that are surrounding the Tancaverde Road and Bear Canyon. So the recommendation from staff is that the planning commission forward this item to Mayor and Council to approve the amendment to the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan, non-residential uses technique 11G as follows. Completely contained within an enclosed and roof structure, except as noted in 11E. And with the exception for parcels 114-51-200B and 114-51-200C, which are exempt from implementation technique 11G and are subject to the following. All uses associated with an express car wash facility are to be screened from adjacent properties and streets by landscaping and decorative fencing or masonry wall. The one thing I want to mention that came up, I think, from the commissioners last time was about the, the verbiage with the, using the word screen. And staff is very confident this is not going to be moving forward a problem because as far as the, because this is policy. And then at this, and it's not saying to be opaque. It's or completely, it's, it's that they need to use screening. So when it goes to the zoning examiner meeting, which is next Wednesday, then at that meeting with the PDP and that they'll be addressing and how it's going to be implemented if the screening is appropriate for that. So just wanted to point that out. Staff doesn't, that's the end of staff's presentation. If there's any questions, I know the applicant's here and has a presentation as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beal. Any questions for staff?
Excuse me. Thank you, John. I did go back and look at the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan and saw that the language was the same as what was used for the outdoor storage and nursery uses. And after talking to you and Dan, you know, understand that this is a more of a policy nature with the language. I want to thank the applicant for going back and revising their development plan or their PDP and their sketches to show what I think really needs to happen there or will happen if they use the UDC landscape standards. So I think it's, you know, with the 30-foot natural buffer and then it looks like almost 15 feet 10 feet minimum of required landscaping in the setback. I don't think I have any other questions.
All right, is that Commissioner McCantsy online?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I took a closer look at the, you know, the applicant's material and some of the background earlier today. I just had two quick questions. And if this, if this gets into, you know, Mr. Carwash's competitive analysis, no need to answer. But I was just curious. It stated that the area lacks a facility, a car wash facility with sufficient capacity to serve the residents. And I was just wondering how that was determined. I just did a Google map, you know, look. And there were, I think, seven car washes to the south and the west of this location. So it just made me curious of that. And then the other one was, is there some standard or minimum definition of natural landscaping, quote unquote? Or the other one, screened from adjacent properties and streets from the city's point of view? Thank you.
Commissioner, I can answer at least your second point. I think the applicant and the can answer the first one about the car wash market demand. The, the, there is a definition for natural buffer in the open space. And it's in the UDC under landscaping. So that's always interpreted and how that should be. And that's why it was, the PDP was revised to make sure that it would show that there's nothing going to be in there of disturbance or basin or anything for that way. And then the screening around, obviously, there can be through the wall, the landscaping, the fencing will try to diminish the the land use from adjacent properties. So that's, so that is a described that way in the, in the code. And then will be always addressed to the rezoning.
I don't see any more questions from the commission.
Did the other question get, the other question didn't get answered?
I was going to, Commissioner, I was going to have the applicant address the market demand on for the, about the car washes because then it'd be more appropriate for the applicant.
Oh, okay. I, I thought they were here. Okay, never mind.
Oh, no, they are. They're going to make a presentation on that.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you.
And the timing is right.
Can't hear.
Yeah, same. Could not hear.
We're just going to take a brief pause while we get the technical difficulties issue figured out.
Okay. Ooh, now you can hear me. There we go. All right. Thank you again. Sorry about that. I'll just start, start from scratch here. My name is Linda Morales and I'm with the Planning Center and I'm a consultant for Mr. Carwash and here to present our request for the amendment to the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan. So again, Linda Morales, I also have Adam Call from the Planning Center with us, with me tonight. And he's been the planner on the case in the office. Avanthia Bardwell is here in person with us from Mr. Carwash. And, and then I have online, I've had James Rockmorton, who is their real estate Vice President. And I may have him hop on in a minute to address the, the comment or the question about the market. But I can answer part of that as well. And then also in the back here, we also have Stephanie Thrush, who is our civil engineer. There we go. So again, I know I gave this full presentation at last time, but seeing that we have some members of the public here, I'll kind of go through it fairly quickly, try not to be terribly repetitive, but I want to still cover it all. This property is a little, little less than 1.4 acres at the northwest corner of Bear Canyon, right on Tancaverde Road. As Mr. Beal pointed out in staff report, it is surrounded by commercial uses with a family storage that wraps around the west and the north. Ace Hardware and then the, a gas station on the corner, just adjacent. So it's, it's very much a commercial area just to the west of the A Family Storage is, is multifamily. One of the original Casita projects. And then we have, you know, commercial uses on the other side of, of Tancaverde as well, across the street. This is a little closer look at it and you can see how the, the A Family Storage really does provide a natural barrier. They're not natural, a built barrier with the storage units as well as their office, which provides almost a continuous screen, which will be great from a noise standpoint as far as, as blocking that. Buildings are going to do a lot better job than anything else as far as, as blocking that sound to the closest residential property, which is the Tancaverde Casitas. This clicker does not ever want to go the first time, so I'm not. There we go. So again, as Mr. Beal pointed out, that we are here about one of the implementation techniques of the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Association, Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan, sorry. And this site is in the far northwest portion of the Bear Canyon Plan. And again, we meet all of the standards and all of the policies and implementation techniques. There are 11 type implementation techniques within the plan. And we meet all of them except subsection G of, of 11. And that one is where it addresses community commercial uses and has a pretty prescriptive set of design standards associated with that. And so again, the one that we are not in conformance with and we are here tonight to ask for relief from with some design techniques that we're going to show in our site plan to mitigate for it in a different way. But it is the one that, that says that it must be completely contained within an enclosed and roof structure. And there are already a couple of exceptions, as were noted in Mr. Beal's staff report. But this is not one of them. Those other two exceptions are for home improvement stores and nurseries. So this would be a policy that would apply only to these two parcels and only to this use. So it's not going to create any precedent through the rest of Bear Canyon Plan. It's very isolated and very specific to this one proposal. And again, as Mr. Beal pointed out, we are doing concurrent rezoning with this plan amendment. So we are going to have a lot more design and a lot more details than we would typically have in a neighborhood plan amendment in the traditional process where you do those as a bifurcated process. So our, again, I'm not reading all, all the, the revised language again, as, as Mr. Beal already did so. But, but again, we talk about the, the use, the proposed use, the express car wash needs to be screened and screened by landscaping and decorative and masonry, decorative fence or masonry wall. And here is our revised site plan. And again, I know I went through this last time, but pointing out a few things that came up as questions and a couple of things that we did amend since the, the study session last month. So the, again, the main use, the car wash use is all enclosed in the building that's labeled on here, the self-service car wash. That's where the cars are washed. That's where the, the equipment is. That's where anything that produces noise or, or external effects is all in that tunnel area. The outdoor uses that don't meet that standard for fully enclosed are the kiosks that you see. That's the blue rectangular area toward the north where people come in and, and pay for their car wash before they come in and enter the tunnel. And the other one is the bays are the parking, like parking lot-like space area where people do the self-service vacuum. And those are, is basically that. It looks like a parking lot with like extra wide spaces. And then we've got the, the vacuum equipment that people can come in and do that and do their, their cleaning before or actually, you know, as they're, as they're washing it. That's the self-service part of that. And so there was some confusion in, in the submitted materials originally where there was a discussion about canopies on that. We are not proposing canopies. Again, we want to get away from anything that looks like a structure or anything that is, you know, closer to the street. We, we want to have a really open and airy and just basically it's going to be parking. And then there are the, the vacuum equipment, the minimal equipment that comes to those to serve those. But that's, that's it in those areas. And one of the questions that was posed at the study session was, you know, why can't those areas be toward the back, toward the north end of the site and flip the building around? And that is because there's a separate policy in the Bear Canyon Plan that requires 100-foot building setback from Tancaverde. So that is that red dotted line that you see, that's 100 feet back. So we couldn't simply flip the site around and put the building more toward the front because then we'd be in violation of that particular clause in the Bear Canyon Plan. There is one other clause in Bear Canyon Plan that, that requests that lowered and see the single-family residential setback. And that is that other red dotted line. And that is actually from SR parcel that has since actually been rezoned for multifamily. So that line is actually going away as that development plan gets implemented. And I think that's in the process now. So, so we are fully compliant with all the, the different setback requirements of the plan. But that's, that's why we couldn't simply flip that around. And the other reason for not bringing the actual car wash up in the, in the pay station any closer to the street is we want to have plenty of queuing. So as cars are coming in through the access lane, they have plenty of driveway space to queue up. And we don't have any issues with traffic backing out and, and coming on to Bear Canyon and causing a traffic situation there. So those are the two reasons why the building is the way it is and where the, why the site is, is designed as that. One of the other questions that came up on the application was, and we had originally looked at the possibility of doing some drainage basins in the 30-foot natural landscape border. And I think there was a note in there that's somewhere in the application that still had that discussion in there. We, in our preliminary working with staff, they said, you know, the, the scenic corridor doesn't allow us to have drainage basins there. It's just not, not something that would fit within those regulations. So we have pulled those out. That was actually a suggestion by Councilmember Cunningham that we do those drainage basins because it would have been nice to be able to have some water harvesting and encourage the flourishing of that vegetation that's in there. Because frankly, as, as is often the case on scenic corridors, some of that vegetation is, is not great anymore just from virtue of the fact that there's a lot of traffic going by and there's been human disturbance, even if it's supposed to be natural. But, but again, we're abiding 100% by the scenic corridor setback. And that's why that 30-foot is there and there will be no other things in there, including drainage basins. And then the, the fourth thing that came up as, as a comment was we didn't have at the time, trees in the, so we've got the 30-foot landscape buffer. And then we've got actually about a little over 20 feet of additional landscape border before you get to that parking area and those vacuum bays. And so we had some lower vegetation, some shrubs in there, but we didn't have trees. So we went back and put some canopy trees in there. And so those are about 25 feet on center. So we've got four of those in this conceptual plan. But again, working with the landscape code, make sure we have that. So we provide that screen of that. And then we did update the renderings as John showed you. And I don't, is, it is this button, right? Oh, there it goes. I don't know, it just takes like four or five times of clicking it to get it to go. So the, these are the updated renderings. And as you can see, they show, and obviously these are at maturity, they won't be this day one. But with the faster growing desert trees, like mesquites and things like that, those should grow up fairly quickly on good irrigation and really provide that full screen that you're not really seeing anything as you're looking toward those, those outdoor vacuum areas. And this is the aerial view of that, again, showing that enhanced landscape border. And at the request of Councilmember Cunningham, he's working on trying to get an equestrian-themed district in this area. So in deference to that, we've developed a sort of horsey equestrian kind of looking entry monument for this. So this is our attempt to, to reflect that theme and really reflect some of the character of the Tancaverde area. And Mr. Carwash was very excited to be part of that and part of that look and feel of that district. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions. I do want to point out, I know we have some folks from the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Association here tonight. We had a neighborhood meeting and we did not have anyone show up. So I was unaware that they had concerns. I know that we've met with Mr. Latour on a couple of other projects in the last month or so. And, and, and this is the first time that I've, I've heard that they have some concerns. And what I understand is their concerns are just basically not to, they don't want to, I, I won't talk for him. But they are concerned about the fact that they're amending the plan again, that we are requesting to amend the plan again. On the, the, the market issue, and, and thank you Commissioner for your, your question on that. I know that there have been, obviously it's, people are talking about there are a lot of car washes going into this community. But this is actually an area that Mr. Carwash has identified that is actually underserved. There are some, some there, but people tend to travel less than three miles to wash their car. And their analysis shows that there is a need for that in this area to serve customers to, particularly to the west of here and to the north of here. And James is online. If we could unmute him, he can probably add a lot more because he is the land person for Mr. Carwash. You find him in there, James Stockman. All right, James, you're up if you can unmute yourself. I don't know. He should be able to do it himself. James, can you unmute yourself? Okay, well, while he's trying to do that, they do use geolocation to determine where people are traveling and to and from to car washes. And this has been determined to be a hole in the Mr. Carwash market for them. So that is why they, why they have prioritized this area and this particular site.
All right, in the meantime, if the commission has any other questions for the applicants?
Vice Chair?
Yes?
I have a question, I suppose, for, I think it's mostly actually for John, if that's an appropriate time to, to ask staff a question. So. Yeah, sorry, and I wasn't here at the last session, so maybe this was covered. What is the intention for if these parcels are no longer used as a car wash? Do we know? So if, if, if these two parcels are no longer used as an express car wash, what happens to this policy?
If, if I may jump in, then that policy would, would just be sitting here in the Bear Canyon Plan, but it wouldn't be applicable to anything else. The property is already the C1 use, so it would continue to have, you know, the uses available to that. If someone did come back to rezonate for a different use, then they would either have to comply with the Bear Canyon Plan and all the policies, or they would have to amend it.
Okay. The way, the way I read this, it, it says that these two parcels are exempt from implementation eleven G. But the uses that are an express car wash have to be screened, et cetera. So the way I read it is that those two parcels are exempt, but only car washes need to screen. So if we want to, if, if, if we want to make it so that these parcels have to go back and this kind of policy exception goes away, if they're no longer used as a car wash, I think we need to add, add a few words.
Commissioner Kenny, if that's in the purview of the planning commission to make changes to, or, and, or add, enhance the amendment language in that, so.
Sure. Does that make sense, Mrs. Morales? I, I don't want to necessarily propose that if you're not comfortable with that, so I wanted to check what the intent was.
Vice Chair Otezupino, Commissioner Kenny, you're, what, can, can you kind of elaborate? So, so your, your concern is that it says it's exempt, but then it offers other design standards. And actually, I think it's, it says it's an exception to that.
Yeah.
But if, if there's alternative wording that you all are more comfortable with, we are fine with, as long as, you know, it, it basically says that we have this alternative way to comply with.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
So what I would, what I, what I'm going to propose is that it says that parcels B and C are exempt from implementation eleven G so long as they are used as an express car wash and they are subject to the following.
I think we're fully comfortable with that, thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, I can kind of see how the semantics would allow for a misunderstanding or, or someone to try to get into a loophole. But we understand the intent was to make sure that it's only influencing for that.
Absolutely, that's, that is absolutely our intent. We're all on the same page, we're not trying to, trying to slip anything in there. That's, that's the intent, thank you.
All right.
And this is James Stock, but I've been able to finally unmute myself.
There he is.
I, I guess I had to acknowledge that the recording is what's happening and it wouldn't let me unmute it until I acknowledged that, that recording. To, to answer the previous question, so we, we do a lot of in-depth analysis and I, you know, not to get, open up our playbook completely to everybody listening. You know, we, so we do a really in-depth analysis on geolocation of people on where they're coming from and going to. And this location is one of the bigger holes that we have in the city of Tucson. And so really, really it's to serve the, the communities that are kind of over the wash from our Tinkaverty location. Bear Canyon, Sabino Canyon, that, those areas. So as, as that was mentioned earlier, kind of the, the homes and residents to the north and, and to the west. And, and just as a, you know, kind of aside, I know it's not in the city of Tucson, but we opened up a new location at the intersection of Thorny Dale and Cortero Farms, which is just a little bit over three miles away from another store we have on Cortero Farms and, you know, just under five miles away from a store we have at McGee and Oracle. And we have another store south of there at River and LaToya. And, you know, then we, there's other competitors that are in the market. And just, you know, the, the quick aside on that is that is of the over a hundred new build locations we've opened up across the United States. That location there was actually one of our, you know, top two or three most successful first year openings in our company history. So, you know, so as, as we, we do this analysis, we, we're pretty good at honing in on where the holes are for Mr. Carwash. And, and what we're really trying to, to do is, you know, create that convenience for people to wash their car. You know, and we kind of, we, we joke about where you live, work and play. So it doesn't matter where you're at in the city of Tucson or, you know, Pima County, you know, as a little bit bigger. There's going to be a convenient location for you to, to wash your car as we're, you know, a membership-based group. You know, seventy percent of our washes come through memberships. And that, that gives the, gives our customers, those members that convenience, no matter where they're at across Tucson. And hopefully that answers your question. And if you have any follow-ups, I'd be happy to try to answer them now that I know how to unmute myself.
Thank you, James.
All right. Yeah, that, that answers the question for me, appreciate that.
Your hand is still up, Commissioner McKenzie, so if you have a follow-up or if you're good?
Yeah, so I did have just one other, I also noticed in the materials that the, the self-serve vacuums were described as vacuum turbines or turbine vacuums. And one thing I do know from my career is that turbines are seriously noisy. So I'm just curious how they got that name. Are they just that powerful suction that they get that name or, or what? Thank you.
James?
Yeah, I, I can, I can answer that, in, unless someone in the room wants to answer it from the Mr. Carwash side.
I believe I can answer that. Adam Call from Planning Center worked on this site plan. The turbines are actually located or housed in an enclosed, to enclosed locations to provide suction to the vacuums in the, in the parking stalls. So those have been, have been placed to minimize noise or anything like that to, to neighbors. So they are, they are placed in an enclosure, it's unroofed just to keep those functioning properly. But the turbines are a separate piece of mechanical equipment from the, from the parking structure, the parking area itself.
I, I think the Commissioner was asking why they were called that and maybe, I, I think that was, was that it?
Yeah, this is.
Chris McKenzie?
Yeah, no, I was, on both counts. I was curious about the, the noise abatement for them as well as, just curious why, why they're called turbine vacuums or vacuum turbines, so.
Yeah, the nomenclature, I, I am not, not aware of.
Yep.
But thank.
No worries, I, I just curious.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I see no more questions from the commission. So at this point, I'd like to open it up to a public hearing, to members of the public who'd wish to speak on this item. In general, there are a, there's a three to five minute time limit per speaker, depending on the amount of speakers we have. This can be extended at my discretion. Members of the commission who may ask questions of the speakers, but we do ask that each speaker be timely as we want to ensure that those who want to be heard can be heard. We do have one person who has requested to speak ahead of time and we will have that person speak first. Vaughn Latour?
Thank you. To the commission members, I represent the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Association. My name is Vaughn Latour and I am the president of the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Association. We represent the twelve HOAs that fall under the umbrella of the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan. The plan was created and adopted by the mayor and council members and the residents of the Bear Canyon Neighborhood in nineteen eighty-four. For forty years, this plan has worked admirably for setting guidelines and zoning in our area. Both the mayor and the council received national recognition when the plan was created for a future-looking, well-thought-out plan that protected the residents. When the city annexed the Bear Canyon area and created this plan, the city agreed to abide by its tenants. It's, it accordingly became a contract with the homeowners and the business people in the area. As such, the area has enjoyed value increases as well as the desirability that has exceeded most parts of Tucson. The businesses that have done business in the area have done so without having to amend the plan. The amending the plan is essentially changing the rules, the rules that the city agreed to abide by in nineteen eighty-four. The plan has only had three changes in the forty years of, of existence, to change the wording here and there and to make it more accurate and to stay with the underlying tenants that we have all had to abide by. Time and again, planning commission, mayor and council have turned down changes to the plan. Changing this plan, this contract that the city has with us is a breach of trust. The only reason the planning center is trying to change the plan is in search for more profits, not to add to the beauty or the desirability of the area. There are areas of town that don't require plans to be changed. Indeed, two car washes have already sprung up within a quarter mile of the Tinkaverty just within the past year or so. That puts four within a quarter mile of the intersection of Grant and Tinkaverty Road. And frankly, that's plenty. We do not need or desire anymore. In point of fact, I was wondering if the last two would have built, knowing that a member of the planning commission was trying to put a third in so close to them, one of which, by the way, is a Mr. Carwash. Please do not allow the planning center to continue to chip away at us in the Tinkaverty Valley. Tinkaverty is a scenic byway, so the eleven E and G do apply here. Join us and say no to any amendment to the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan. Thank you for your time.
Do any other members of the public wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Tom Hadding. I am a resident of Tucson. My wife and I live in the lakes of Castle Rock, which is an HOA, the Castle Rock HOA within the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Association. I served on the board for a little past three years. I was the president of Castle Rock Association twenty, twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three, and I'm still a, a board director. My concern with this, this proposed development really is focused on traffic. One of the biggest concerns for safety that our, our neighborhood has had have been the large number of, of accidents at the Bear Canyon-Tinkaverty intersection and the Bear Canyon-Catalina Highway intersection. There are not many weeks when we don't have a couple of those that substantially back up traffic. My second concern here is that this, this development, which appears to have in, in road and out, out road from it is on the Tinkaverty Boulevard. And with that, it's only one small direction to the west coming out. And traffic backs up from Bear Canyon, turning right onto Tinkaverty Boulevard, from traffic coming from the east towards the west past this. I don't see any deceleration or acceleration lane. If it's there, that's, that would be a good thing. The traffic coming in and out there and slowing down the traffic at that intersection, you know, less than fifty yards from that intersection in my mind poses a challenge. With that, those are my concerns, thank you for the time tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any other members? Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Peggy Carson, I'm the vice president of the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Association. And to your point, we were never notified of the meeting in November. Normally, we get letters. Our board has been a very active board since we took over a year and a half, two years ago. But the three of us did not receive any kind of notification, nor did we receive any notification for the zoning examiner meeting next week for this as well. So I'm not sure where the process is broken, but typically we get letters, but we haven't. This was the first letter that we've gotten was for this meeting here. Thank you.
So a quick follow-up question to that that I had. Your Neighborhood Association did get a letter for this public hearing?
Yes, two days before the meeting.
Is staff able to discuss the requirements for notification and, and what maybe has been submitted?
So the requirements for the notification are all property owners within four hundred feet and all registered neighbor associations within one mile. The list is generated by the assessors mailing list and then parcels. And then we, also the, the other neighbor association list is from all the registered neighbor associations that supply their contact information in that we follow up with and they have a address. So staff, we can take a look and, and see, because everything, they're mailed out. The requirement is fifteen days, no later than fifteen days prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Any other members from the public? Yes?
You need name, Jim Trigo. Anyway, could we pop up the overhead shot that was done? It was in one of the presentations. Is that something that we could get back up there? Something that I thought was rather interesting. There you go.
There you go. If you look at. Just to the top right hand corner of that image. There's a small building with a white roof. I don't know if, yeah, you're getting close right there. That's a car wash. I have never seen that car wash overloaded with customers. I I'm just amazed at the studies that they've done, that there is such a demand for uh, another. Large self-service car wash in the area. Just an observation.
Thank you. Any other members from the public?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Miss Ortiz and I'm also the secretary treasury of the PCNA. But I'm also a neighbor that lives off of Tancaverdy and Bonanza Avenue. My question is, you say you're using landscaping. But what size landscaping? Trees that are going to take fifty years before they're sound barrier? And why are you taking out trees and using more water? From what I understand, when I took a tour at one of the other facilities. They said that during that that they recycle the water after the car washes, but it can only be recycled twice. Then it has to be replenished. You're also adding on to irrigation to these vegetations. And I think the statement was made that some of the vegetation was never taken care of at some of the other places. How do we know that's not going to happen again? And the vegetation is going to die. New trees were planted along the Tancaverdy Road from uh, Bear Canyon. West almost to Rides Town. Those trees have not been taken care of at all. There's a few that are dying. Now the city put those in. Nobody's taking care of them. So how do we know that they're going to do that? The other Mr. Car washes that have been around town, and I do believe that we made a count, there are forty car washes. And four within the area of Grant, Colb and Tancaverdy area. There's four car washes. And they're building another one. How do we know that they're not going to continue to use water? I know they're they're trying to point that they're going to try and use less water. But if you're going to have to replenish those tanks again after twice. I don't see how that's done. We're losing water. Our water source is a very precious commodity in this state and in this town. And this town has done a lot. To keep the zero scape and to make sure that we have water, so much so that we gave some back to Lake Mead recently. Pinell County is just north of us. They have cut their water so much, none of the farmers are growing anything in that county. We have done our job to help save water here. I don't see how forty car washes in a community is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members from the public who'd wish to speak on the issue? Okay, hearing none. Um. This time I'd like Chris. Yes.
I was just wondering if we could get the applicant to talk about their notification process and neighborhood meeting.
Yeah, I was asking, gonna ask if you'd like me to uh.
Yeah, thank you.
To discuss, um. Well, a couple of things. Um, I know traffic was mentioned. Uh, car washes are not a destination. Car washes take advantage of the traffic that is going by. It's a passerby type of a thing. So this is aimed at the people that are already traveling Tancaverdy. Very few people take separate trips as a destination. Uh, and now that's what's reflected in our traffic analysis. We did do a full traffic report. And obviously, these are all, traffic is an issue that will be, you know, gone over, I'm sure, in the zoning examiner hearing. It's really more pertinent to the reason pertinent to the rezoning. And less so with the policy. Uh, and then the same thing, we do have our water expert on if you would like to hear about the water. Again, it's more of a land use issue. Unless of the policy that's really addressing the outdoor use, so. Uh, that's at the commissioner's pleasure. You can let me know if you'd like me to have them come on. And and then as far as the notification, uh, we actually had a conversation, I know, with some of these folks at a different meeting back in February, and I know that they were aware of the project. Um, so I I'm not sure how they were aware of it, but we did talk about it because they said something about, oh, it's going to be another car wash. And so I I know that we always have the folks and the official notification from the city's information. To make sure that the neighborhood association gets that letter when we do our neighborhood meetings. And so I I know for a fact that they were mailed one. If that information is out of date or something, then obviously it needs to be updated, but we did to our the our best ability. And um. And so that that's and as far as the cities, I know they were probably using the same. Um, contact information, but yeah, absolutely. There was an attempt to to make sure they were notified of it. Any other questions or clarifications I can offer now, or would you like the water?
Uh, yeah.
I was just reading your neighborhood meeting outreach. It says that you you contacted. Mr. Richardson. November. And express general support for the project. Sent an email to Mr. Adang, sorry. November, is that? He responded.
I'm having a hard time, Mr. Martin, or Commissioner Martin, hearing you.
You contacted, it says that you contacted Mr. Richardson on November second by telephone. He expressed general support. And later it says an email was sent to Mr. A dang, I'm sorry if I'm asking you. On November second, he responded and he would like to discuss the proposal to later date. I'm just reading from your application.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin. Yes. Yes, and frankly, I'm. Yeah, we 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 were a little surprised that when we had the neighborhood meeting that people did not come out. But I do know that the notice was was issued and there there was an awareness so that, you know, it it. I and I think that's the point of why we mentioned it at that other meeting because, you know, we're kind of surprised, but. But this is the first time I'm hearing the concerns that were expressed tonight. And 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 frankly, I I understand that that there was a lot of thought that was put in and I I respect the fact there was a lot of thought put in back in nineteen eighty-four when that plan was developed. But uses change, times change, and I feel that the proposal that we have in front of you has. Given a substitute method of mitigating for the concern of having those outdoor uses. And the other examples um, that Mr. Beal pointed out in his presentation of of other uh, community commercial uses and I was involved in. In one of those has offered those alternative ways of mitigating for the concern, which is the views, the noise and. And all of the other externalities that may come with outdoor use. So I just offer that that it's not that we're just asking, you know, to get rid of a policy because it doesn't fit our use. We're offering alternative mitigation and that's what we're asking you to consider. Woo, and we appreciate appreciate your consideration of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, question to staff? Follow up questions or follow up from the from the public, people who have already spoke? Is that at the discretion of the chair or is that, you know?
Um, yeah, so uh, thank you, Vice Chair Ortiz. You know, yeah, you uh, you have the ability while the public hearing is open. Um, to request more information from the public if you'd like to.
Okay. Um, I would like to hear questions from the commission. Looks like we have several. I don't know who came first on there, um, but left to right, it looks like Commissioner Cassidy.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I have a couple of questions based on the public feedback. I heard concerns about traffic, about uh, noise and about water. I was wondering if the applicant could talk a little bit more about the efficiency of water use at a car wash versus, you know, washing your car in your driveway at home. Um, as far as noise, I think I read somewhere that. The the screening that was going to be used around the vacuum machinery would drop the decibel level significantly. I think I remember seventy decibels. So if you can explain, like, maybe provide a comparison of what's another. Everyday thing that produces seventy decibels, like, what does that mean in real life? And on the traffic, what are some of the uses that could go there now without this plan amendment and rezoning? And how does the traffic compare with the car wash?
The applicant would like to respond?
So, um, if we could. Could unmute. I'm Ron. Yeah, I don't see him on there. Oh, Rob, is it? Yeah. Heisterman, there he is, his R. I couldn't see the R. Um, Rob, if you could come on and address the water. It looks like it's at, it's, you need to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
There, there.
Hello, uh, thanks for the opportunity just to speak on this. Um. So I I'm I'm not sure there's really much of any, there wasn't really a question here per se, uh, so much as a concern. So I mean, I'm happy to speak on any specific question, but um, some detail and some background, I am the water expert for Mr. Carwash. Um, I employ certified uh, water treatment plant and water use experts um, that come from other municipalities around the country. Um, first off, Mr. Carwash is based in Tucson, so this is our our home market. This is our, this is where we live. This is where we take great pride, so. Water use is of the most important, uh, one of the most important factors that we account for in what I do day in and day out. Um, so much so that uh, we really consider our partnership with Pima Water Reclamation District. One of our most valuable partnerships in this uh, area. Um, we do everything we can to bring the water usage down first and foremost. Um, because recycling is great, but if you can use less in the first place, that's the most ideal thing. So I think there was a question around or there was an ask about com- comparison of water use uh, from a home washing angle versus. Through a car wash or express car wash to a mister. I can't speak to another express car wash so much as I can speak to ours. Um, I have some general information on other car washes, but when you wash at home, you could be using every bit of seventy gallons, eighty gallons of uh, of water. And unfortunately, that's not the end of that story. There's that use, but that water and all those soaps and everything that you rinse off your vehicle go on to the street or down the storm drain. And into our system without being treated, without having any other kind of neutralization or any other kind of mitigating factor to that water. And yes, it goes into the ground and and eventually seeps into the water table, but what are we doing to our environment around us in the meantime? Whereas the water we use, um, we recycle as much of it as we can. There isn't a limit to our water recycling per se. I do not know where that um, the the talking point about only being able to recycle it twice came from. Um, I I'm not really sure how that would even be. Something that somebody could say with any kind of factual um. Knowledge to be on, to be honest, but we have systems that will recycle ninety gallons a minute continuously, all day long, day in and day out. Um, the water that we do use was, has all the grit removed, has any chemicals neutralized. And then when it is going it out to the um, Water Reclamation District, it is uh, great water for them to process. There's no. Extra um, work that they have to do on their end. Um, we partner very well with them to make sure that we do water testing of every uh, of all the element that we're putting up out of our washes. Um, meaning things like. Do we have high levels of copper or high levels of lead, which are toxic to those organisms that they use at those water processing plants that create that ecosystem of that allow them. To return that water to a state that can be put back in the washes or reused at golf courses and things of that nature, so. We're very mindful of the water that we're using. We try and use the least amount that we can. Right now, we average in our market around twenty-two to twenty-four gallons a car. That water is again processed. We use as much recycling water as we can. But that water is processed to the degree that when we put it back in the Pima Water Reclamation District's uh, hands, it is. As great a water as we can possibly return to them. I don't know if there's any specific other questions, but I'm happy to answer anything that I can. Um, I could probably speak a little bit to the noise on the um. The the vacuum producers. I've never heard of them referred to as turbines. I thought that was interesting. Um, I could see where that would come from, but uh, the vacuums that we're using in those enclosures will be sub the noise level of any traffic that's going by naturally on Tancaverdy in the course of any given day. You're not going to hear the vacuums from the street. You're not going to hear the vacuums most likely from any neighboring areas around. Uh, they're just, they're they're very subdued and they're very well engineered, and then we go one level stronger in putting them in an enclosure. That would direct any other kind of noise up into the air as opposed to any surrounding areas, so.
All right, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Cassidy, but there was another question, maybe through staff best to answer about other uses within the C one district. If the property was not rezoned, could be used?
Some of those uses could be re- retail uses of stores, um, restaurants. See.
Offices.
Offices. Of residential apartments. So different, different commercial type uses.
Thank you, staff. That answers all my questions. So all of those uses would be things that would be destinations that would draw more traffic.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Cassidy.
Can you guys still hear me? This is Rob.
Yes.
Uh, one thing I do want to uh, kind of delineate here too is I I I've been looking at the map here. Um, I don't see another express car wash in the immediate area. The four that are spoken of. Other than our Tancaverdy wash, they're probably in Bay Automatics, and in Bay Automatic is a small structure. Um, maybe it's the one that the other gentleman is referring to with the roof on it. Those are in Bay Automatics. They can only do one car at a time. And very often they're using upwards of fifty, sixty gallons a car because they have to use high pressure and a lot of other things that uh, are not as efficient as an express conveyorized car wash. So I just wanted to be clear on that.
Thank you. I see Commissioner Zadier has her hand up.
Hi, thank you. Um, I want to say thanks to the um. Bear Canyon Neighborhood Association for showing up and um, I can understand um, how they feel. And you mentioned many things, but you didn't mention the initial. Um. When they were annexed by the city of Tucson and there was a promise made at annexation, and I'm familiar with those promises being broken. In my neighborhood. Um, and so nobody is brought up if that is a concern of the city and um, should set be taken because apparently they said they weren't notified. And it's entirely possible. I am not sure, um, I'm just going out of personal experience here. Um, I know that we only have one person that actually works for Neighborhood Resources right now. They are planning to hire another person. Um, but that is where, and they're under their planning and development services. That is where the meeting lists come from, and I think uh. Um, it was mentioned that you get an assessors list. I don't know if that assessor list is actually from Neighborhood Resources because they are the ones that have. They make sure that um, letters are sent out to the chairs and co-chairs of all neighborhood associations, regardless if they're within four hundred feet. Um, of the project itself, they are guaranteed to get a letter, so I'm not sure if things have changed at the city. I am no longer chair of my neighborhood association, so I no longer get these, the notices from the city. And so I think it's best if um. Um, it is on a scenic by way that um, this is looked for, that the city looks into whether um. The list, there is a list that was sent to the planning um, folks that are working for Mr. Carwash. And that list, they should have a list that's on an Excel file that they can check over to make sure that the chair and the co-chair receive notices initially. To actually attend the first meeting back in November. Um. And um, I think maybe before we decide on this that um. Um, PDSD looked into where that list actually originated from. Did it originate from um? Neighborhood resources where it traditionally has come from? Or did it? Or did it, was it generated from an assessor's list? I, I've never heard it called that. But Neighborhood Resources have a list, the list of all the current chairs and co-chairs of neighborhood associations. So Mr. Beal, do you know, did that list, was that list generated by Ms. Rump?
So the, the, oh, actually, Corn.
Sure, I'll speak to that. Vice Chair Ortiz Pino, Commissioner Zegir. So actually, attachment E in your materials is the neighborhood meeting summary from the applicant. If you go to page six, you can see the list that was provided to the applicant for the neighborhood meeting mailing. On that list is Von Latour of the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Association and Missy Ortiz of the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Association. At two different addresses, again, those are in the attachments that are available for the public. So that's the list that was used by the applicant and then my staff, right, by PDSD for the mailing for this meeting. And that is based on the most recent information that we have from the Neighborhood Association about their current officers. So I just want to clarify, because this often comes up, where do our lists come from? There's two different entities that we're mailing notice to. One is property owners within 400 feet. And for that, we look to the assessor, which has the most recent information about property ownership. We also mail to neighborhood associations. And for that information, we look to our Neighborhood Association database, which has the most recent information about neighborhood association officers. But we do rely on neighborhood associations to update us when they have a change in officers or addresses. So if these addresses are incorrect, we absolutely want to update that as soon as possible.
Thank you. That, that's, that's what I expected. Thank you so much for clarifying that.
And I would just add that the following page to that is a signed affidavit of the date in which those mailings were sent. Commissioner McKenzie, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I was just curious, does the city have an establishment of need protocol for facilities like this? I, you know, we heard from the Mr. Carwash folks as to their market assessment, which certainly makes sense. But I'm just curious if the city uses an establishment of need type protocol to, you know, inform these kinds of decisions?
The protocol that would base is using the Unified Development Code for is the land use appropriate or not? Looking at the area neighborhood plans, is the land use appropriate or not? And then any development standards that regards to the site, water harvesting standards, landscaping. So more of those are the, the, if you want to call it protocols that the city would look at when they're looking at these type of projects.
Okay, but, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't like, like weigh in on whether a, you know, a car wash was needed at such a location as part of the whole process to change or amend a neighborhood plan, is that correct?
That is correct. That does come up, obviously, in the zoning examiner's public hearing. The applicant has a design compatibility report making, you know, their case, how it meets the plans and can either benefit the, the community. But that's how that would come up, but would staff looking primarily at the plans?
Thank you. All right, I don't see any more questions from the commissioners. There's at least one more question from the public. I'd like to invite you up. Whoever's first, whoever's.
With due respect to Mrs. Morales, she is speaking about a meeting that we both attended at the Lakes of Castle Rock on a different subject. After the meeting was over, I asked, why is there so many car washes popping up? There was nothing mentioned about this particular car wash. That's what the conversation was. And their rhetorical remark, their rhetorical mark was, it's to conserve water. And that was it, and they walked away. That was the conversation. Thank you.
Yes, I just, I just want to follow up the, the comment by Mrs. Morales on that car washes aren't a destination. She said very few people do that. Well, let me just give you, this is one example of someone where the car wash is a destination. I like Mr. Carwash. I've used it for the whole time that I've been here and they've been here in, in the area. When I want to wash my car, my destinations have been the Mr. Carwash just off the intersection of Cole and Golf Links. And then recent, more recently, the intersection on Tanka Verde before you get to Pima. But when I go to the car wash, I'm going there for a reason, for a purpose. And so I find it, I don't know, confusing, interesting, as to where we don't consider this the destination. Really, the, the follow-on question really is, has a traffic analysis been done for this area, the expected amount of traffic and, and the impact it will have on a short distance from the intersection of Bear Canyon and Tanka Verde? Thank you.
Ms. Morales?
Yes, absolutely. As this is a plan amendment concurrent with the rezoning, we have prepared a traffic impact analysis. The results are in here. However, we don't have our traffic engineer here because this is a policy issue. This is a neighborhood plan amendment. And it's, yes, we expect that to come up in the zoning examiner hearing, and we will have the experts there for that. But, but absolutely, we do have a full traffic impact analysis. The site was designed per that, again, where I talked about the queuing and, and the, and because of that, we did not meet the warrants for turning lanes. And, you know, it's designed all in that, but again, rezoning issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, that will be discussed in the zoning examiner hearing, for sure. Commissioners Zegir?
Yes, thank you. I was wondering, would it be possible to have the annexation documents of that area where the BCNA president said that there was an annexation promise to maintain the character of the neighborhood 40 years ago? And just because somebody wasn't born 40 years ago doesn't mean that everything after that they were born is obsolete and of no value. So I would like, I don't know if anybody else on the commission would like to see a copy of that annexation, but I would if you could make it available on the website, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll take one more question, then we'll end the public hearing. It's a motion.
Not a question, but to the commissioner's comment, the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan is available on the city website. She can pull it up and read it at any time. It's there.
Thank you, sir.
I was referring to the, the city of Tucson puts it in their annexation documents that's also registered with the city, but I will go ahead and look at your neighborhood plan. Thank you, sir.
All right, with that, I would like to entertain a motion for closing the public hearing. So move in a second?
Second.
All those in favor of recommending closure?
Aye.
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 And are there any nays? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Thank you. I would now like to open, open up to the commission to deliberate and discuss the issue at hand and then the policy change to the amendment.
Vice Chair, if I may, thank you. And thank you to the applicant and their representatives and Ms. Morales for, for being here. And thank you for the neighbors who showed up as well. This type of application, as I understand it, is a little unusual for the planning commission. I think it's been a little while since there's been like a concurrent plan amendment rezoning. I don't think they're that popular, right? So it's a little unusual for us to be seeing this level of detail on a plan amendment. Our role in the plan, planning commission is, is high level policy. And really just whether this proposed plan amendment, accepting these two parcels from implementation technique 11G is appropriate or not. The property is already designated commercial. It could have been developed at some point in the past as some sort of commercial use, but it hasn't. The question is really whether the applicant's proposed mitigation is enough to overcome the existing policy that commercial uses on these parcels should be entirely within an enclosed building. Since this is going through a concurrent rezoning, many of the concerns, many of the concerns we've heard tonight are, I think, more appropriate for the zoning examiners purview. And there'll be plenty of additional opportunities for the neighbors and the applicant to, to talk and maybe make some more changes if, if they can come to sort of, any sort of agreement. I don't disagree with any of the concerns necessarily that, that the neighbors brought up. I don't think that the planning commission has the necessary qualifications to opine as to whether there are too many car washes in Tucson. We're not, I'm not a market expert. I would assume that the applicant has done market studies and the market study probably shows that a, this area would support a car wash. I would encourage the applicant to reach out to the Bear Canyon neighbors sometime before the next zoning examiner hearing. You might not come to any sort of agreement, but meeting together is kind of the biggest step. I'd also like to point out that the plan doesn't, does not designate the property as open space. It's already commercial. So I think that the fact that this has never been developed shows that maybe the current plan designation doesn't work, and maybe it needs to be changed. So I believe that the limited scope of the proposed plan amendment, with the edits that I mentioned before, limiting these two parcels to a car wash are sufficient and appropriate, given that it's already designated commercial. They're mitigating it and that there will be more opportunities for the applicant and the neighbors to meet before this is fully approved. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Martin?
I can thank Commissioner McKinney for saying just about everything I wanted to say. I think the setback in the landscape, the density and the opens, the natural open space along the street mitigate the, any concerns for having outdoor uses on the site, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin. Are there any commissioners online that would like to discuss?
I would agree with the two commissioners who've already spoken. And if nobody else has any comments they'd like to make, I can go ahead and make a motion.
I would entertain a motion.
Okay, I move to approve the plan amendment as presented by staff, but with the language change that was proposed earlier, I believe by Commissioner Kinney. Do I need to restate that language change, or does staff have record of that?
So if you'd like to restate kind of what you said?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. My proposed revision would be that parcels 114-51-200B and 114-51-200C are exempt from implementation 11G, so long as they are used as an express car wash and are subject to the following, including that the express car wash be screened from the adjacent properties and streets by landscaping and decorative fencing or masonry wall.
Yes, thank you. That would be part of my motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second. I just wonder if a friendly amendment. I think it was talking about the facilities outside of the main tunnel. I don't have the language, the current, the current standard talks about all uses, I think, or activities. I think that should be part of the, yeah, all uses. I don't think I heard you say all uses, but maybe you did, sorry. I think if you said all uses, then I'll accept that, so.
Would it, would it be helpful if we pulled up the, the amendment language that you could then do so well?
Sure, yes, please. All right, Commissioner McKenzie, I'll let you do the wordsmithing and get your syntax correct here.
Commissioner Kinney, right?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. So let me, if I could amend, well, I guess this would be a friendly amendment to Commissioner Cassidy's original motion with the proposed language change that parcels 114-51-200B and 114-51-200C are exempt from implementation 11G, so long as they are used as an express car wash and are subject to the following. All uses with an express car wash are to be screened from the adjacent properties and streets by landscaping and decorative fencing or masonry wall.
I accept that friendly amendment.
All right, friendly amendment accepted. A second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Martin, seconds. Can we go ahead and get a vote, then? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Are there any nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Can we go ahead and go ahead and get a roll call now that we have some nays?
Thank you. Commissioner Cassidy?
Aye.
Commissioner Zegir?
Nay.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Pafford?
Nay.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ortiz Pino?
Aye.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Aye.
And Commissioner Kenny?
Aye.
All right, and the ayes have it.
I just want to clarify on that, that it passed six to two, but it'll go forward without a formal recommendation. Maybe, there needs to be seven votes for a recommend, favorable recommendation to mayor and council.
Just to clarify, the outcome of the vote will be noted in the report to mayor and council, but it is not considered a favorable recommendation.
Okay, so we have, what was the quorum right now that we have eight? And we would have needed seven, okay? Thank you for that clarification. So with that, please provide, call for the next item, PDSD staff announcements.
Yes, I have one announcement for the planning commission, which is that for the past several months, the position of planning administrator that oversees the long-range planning section of the department has been vacant. And as of Monday next week, Dan Bersick will be taking on that role. So congratulations to Dan. You'll still see him at planning commission, but in an expanded role.
Great news. Congratulations, Dan.
Congrats.
Thanks, thanks, everyone. Additionally, I wanted to just kind of let everyone know that this is Commissioner Pafford's last meeting. So we really want to thank him for all of his service that he's put in for the last eight years or so. He was chair during the, the sign code revisions that we had done probably five or six years ago. He helped out with the, he was chair for the IID update. that we had done probably five or six years ago. Um, he helped out with the IA, he was chair for the IID update um and has really been an integral part of the planning commission over the last eight years. So we really appreciate all of the hard work and um and time that you put into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for your service, Commissioner Pafford. Sorry to see you.
Thank you. And thank everyone. And Dan, thank you very much. Um, everybody on uh that attends these meetings works very hard and puts a lot of work in council. And Mr. Bersuk, I would like to mention you in particular. When I was chair, you were instrumental in helping me understand how to get through meetings. And you took a lot of time. I know you're a very busy person. And um, and I thank you very much. You're obviously committed to doing the finest job possible. I I I know that you put a lot of hard work into this, into the commission, into your professional role and to to our community and to Tucson. And and I thank all of you, and in particular, Mr. Bersuk. Thank you. And good luck to everybody. It's been a pleasure and I um, I have enjoyed it. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to go, frankly.
Well, thank you for your service. Um, call for the next item, future agenda items?
Um, yes, so a couple uh agenda items coming up. First one is we have a Broadmore Broadway Village Neighborhood Plan update. So they've gone through and done a uh an update on their entire neighborhood plan. This is their neighborhood association. Um, we are looking to have a study session for that in June and then a public hearing in July. Um, so we'll be sending out a uh doodle poll to the commission to kind of figure out what days work uh best for you um for that meeting. Um, and then the second item, uh which is the Houghton East near uh Neighborhood Plan Amendment, um will also be coming in June and July. Um, and then finally, um, a third item that we would like to do as well, that we're looking to do over the summer, um, is just provide you with the Plan Tucson update. Um, so we're currently uh getting ready to do what we're calling uh cross-cutting, kind of goals meeting, bringing it all together. Um, and then we're gonna have a community forum and that'll wrap up our phase two. Um, so we would like to come to the planning commission and provide an update on phase two of Plan Tucson um and kind of, you know, give you an overview of where we're at uh um as you will be uh one reviewing that plan and recommending that plan to our mayor and council.
Excellent. Thank you for that. It appears our audience has left, so I I will go through the motions. Thank you for joining us. Um, call the audience. Okay. Uh, motion to end the meeting?
I'll move to adjourn.
I second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Thank you all so much. Have a great evening.
Great, thanks.